Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, March 27, 2006. This evening, City Council will be making a series of committee meetings, starting with Planning and Development, and City Services and Environment, Finance and Personnel, Transportation, and Financial Communication. Planning and Development is chaired by Councilmember Debbie Phillips. Debbie?
Thanks, Mr. President. We just have a few agenda items this evening. We have a variance request. It was a recommendation from the Planning Commission to grant a variance based on the depth-to-width ratio of two lots on Carroll Road. I think everybody received a copy of this a little bit over a week ago. It looks pretty straightforward. Any comments or questions?
No, it's good.
So we can go ahead and bring this forward next week? That was quick. Okay. I have two miscellaneous items. First, I just want to talk briefly about the annexation timeline. When we received this, there was a little bit of a question about how we're going to proceed with the annexation of University Estates. The Planning Commission has requested a hearing, which takes 30 days' notice before they'll be able to then make a decision about their zoning designation for the annexation. We looked at the calendar, and we need to approve this by July 17, or else the annexation doesn't happen. So there's a pretty tight timeline that we're working within, but there's plenty of time. If we start reading it by June 19, we'll be able to get through three readings just fine. So we would hope, Mayor Abel, that we can get a recommendation sometime mid-May should give us plenty of time to deal with it. Do you have a sense of what the timeline's going to look like on your end?
I think we have to give 30-day notice on the public hearing on the zoning. We would advertise that. It'll be this April 27th. So then we'll meet the first Thursday in May, and hopefully at that time we'll do the zoning designation and pass it on to council. And I think you have to do, you're required to do a public hearing, and I think that also has 30 days. You could probably do that without our recommendation.
We could advertise.
You could start it. Yes.
One of the things I was thinking is that we can go ahead and advertise the hearing while we're discussing it in committee, so that we can publish that notice, and that can be kind of moving along concurrently. So I think we do have time to handle this, and I just wanted to make sure we had some sense of the timeline. And the other miscellaneous item that I'm aware of, Leslie Showers here from ACNET to talk to us about a project they're working on, and it looks like she has visual aids and everything.
Well. So I'm primarily here to just give you an update on the public market pavilion project that it seems like the Athens Farmers Market Association, the City of Athens, and ACNET have been working on for at least a millennium and perhaps at this point. But I think the stars are finally aligning, and it seems that we're moving forward now with the site. And the proposed location right now is property at the University Mall. We have been meeting with the new local owners, Grant Hayes and Tom Harfitt, and they have been interested in pursuing an agreement with the City of Athens and ACNET to move forward to submit some applications for funding for a permanent location, not just for the Athens Farmers Market, but hopefully for all the public markets that will be popping out over the next five to 10 years, serving not only the City of Athens, the County of Athens, but certainly making our public markets a regional destination for folks all over southeastern Ohio. So I've just prepared a little handout. The front kind of gives a short overview of where we're at in terms of preparing the applications. It also suggests that we have a tight timeline now for some of the applications, requests or proposals that will need to be made in the next four to six weeks. So one of the reasons I'm here, and my apologies, I haven't been able to get here in time for three readings, but City Council does need to pass an ordinance to have a resolution to allow ACNET to be the project manager for this project. If you notice on the back, there's a current draft of not probably all the applications we will make, but certainly current funders that are identified. And the two most pressing deadlines for this project are an USDA Farmers Market grant and also a Rural Business Opportunities grant. One is due May 1st. I think the other is due May 22nd. And then there's a number of other applications we would like to apply for probably over the month of April, May, and June.
So what we need to do is just authorize ACNET as the project manager, and we can model that on language from authorizations for other grant proposals, I would think.
I just have a question because I'm not familiar with this, but I love the farmers market, and I think it's fabulous. Is this basically for a covering facility, or what does all this go for?
Well, actually, I do have some very early blueprints that John Ballinger from RBC Architects have prepared. And most of the prints are relayed together input and response from both the Athens Farmers Market vendors, the Municipal Arts Commission vendors, and our customers of the market. So if you'd like to look at some of them, we could.
So it's basically a building or some kind of a structure?
Right. I don't think we know total square footage at this point, but we're trying to create a pavilion and two sort of adjacent gazebo's that will allow the market to sort of wax and wane between the low season and its peak season. Hopefully accommodating at least 100 vendors.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay.
Leslie, if you could, I found the Audubon magazine quote pretty astounding, well-deserved. Could you read that for us?
I don't know if I have it with me. Let me go grab it.
Well, just off this, I was hoping to get you to toot your own horn to a certain extent, but the project builds on the success of the current Athens Farmers Market, the largest year-round market in the state of Ohio, and identified in the recent issue of Audubon magazine as one of the top 10 markets in the U.S. That's pretty astounding.
It is. Well, it's a very shared treasure.
It's a wonderful market. Yeah, it really is.
And I think we need to think about this in terms of not just the Athens Farmers Market. Certainly, those vendors have been the pioneers to establish this market, but we do have, I think, other opportunities from local artisans, you know, all the folks that are now participating in our Market Sundays, uptown. I think, you know, the possibilities are endless with a pavilion space.
As I say, I remember the Ann Arbor, Michigan Farmers Market, which has a covered space and then, you know, other retail markets have grown up around it, and I think that this is a wonderful opportunity.
Well, I think we're very fortunate to have so many partners involved. This has been an ongoing project. There's been 15 other partners who have been very involved since we received the Ford Foundation planning funds about a year and a half ago. So I think the consensus among all the partners is the time is now, and if we can raise the capital, and I'm feeling, I don't want to feel overly confident, but I think we can impress upon funders, community members, and our partners that the funding will be available and we'll be able to achieve our goal.
Thanks.
Super. Bravo.
Should I hold up just one of the prints?
We'd love to.
And while she's getting it, I'll remind you that this coming Sunday is the Sunday Market, uptown in front of Baker Center, and, you know, the art market part of it is struggling and finding its legs, and this will be the third year, and so hopefully someday they will be a part of this market as well.
You know, it's such a great place to take, oh, you're ready to go, but I was going to say, if you have out-of-town guests on weekends, I never miss taking people there, and we never even decide what the menus are going to be for the week when you go there and see what is the freshest.
No, sure, you can do all your grocery shopping, really, at the Farmers Market. I mean, even gourmet dog biscuits. Well, this, again, the total disclaimer is it's not to scale, it doesn't meet all the ordinances, it's just, again, a picture for vendors and customers to respond to. And it's also not totally ready for prime time yet. There'll probably be a lot more media about this project come April, and I'm going on vacation tomorrow morning at 6:00, so you're not going to be able to get ahold of me. But you should be writing the Sunday Market article this week.
Likewise.
So the top would be the University Mall, and then there'd be probably sort of paved concrete that would sort of identify where the market traffic is.
Leslie, stand in front of the microphone, please, as you just, Leslie, and the microphone, please.
Go to the microphone side. How's that sound?
I'm not loud enough? I'm usually so loud. So the main structure would go from the entryway of the University Mall and obviously be in a different position from where the market is now, parallel to East State Street. So it's going to be, what is that, perpendicular to East State Street. Hopefully, the covered structure will accommodate a lot of the current needs for our vendors, especially in terms of water, electrical hook-up, probably even have phone lines so that more people can have the electronic benefit transfer, so we'll be able to have more access for low-income individuals using food stamps. We're also going to have two pavilions that will spread out in both directions from the main pavilion, and then there certainly will be some vendors who will never want to be undercover, some of the bedding plant folks, some of the horticultural businesses. They need a larger space, and they really want to be out in the fresh air. But other folks who might want covered space, they'll be able to have all the infrastructure access that they don't have now. Hopefully, there'll be a lot of benches and ways to accommodate our customers, so people will be able to take a break. For many years now, we've had the Farmers Market Pavilion, where people can sit in a sort of a café atmosphere, so we'll continue to do that. I think cover will also accommodate more of the specialty food entrepreneurs that ACNET deals with, so we'll have more food service hopefully at the market. And I know our city-county health department and our Ohio Department of Agriculture inspectors will be very happy, because this is really going to have our vendors, make it much easier for them to be in compliance. So, you know, we'll have endless conversations about this over the next year and a half, but that's where we're at at this point. Just some renderings, too, of what it will look like. It'll be the top or the bottom materials, probably solar panels on top to run some of the fans and some of the other things. So it'll be bright and airy and accommodate a wonderful shopping experience.
I just want to say that I know that you've been putting in incredible amounts of time and energy into this, and that there are lots of, lots of partners involved in this. It's a complex project, and I just think you're doing a fabulous job with this. It's such an important part of our community, and anything we can do to help.
Okay, well, don't feel free. I'll be coming back to ask.
So we can bring this up for first reading next week? Does anyone else have miscellaneous items for Planning and Development? Okay, the merger.
City Services and Environment?
Yes, it is. So we're going to call for City Services and?
Environment. I'll start with the environment part of it. Last, was it last two weeks ago, we talked about Tanya of the Health Department came across talking about the hookah smoke shops that are being placed in town or starting up in town, and their desire to have some kind of signage there as a health warning. What I've given you, I passed a packet around, it should be in your mailbox, dated from yesterday, it really covers the section of code that the Indoor Clean Indoor Air Act is under, which is 91301 to, actually, 99 is the definitions, but essentially, there's two different aspects to this. One is to just deal with the signage, the other one is to make the city smoke-free. I know that discussion was brought up at the last meeting, committee meeting. The way I'm looking at it, if you can read it, basically, the idea is that we probably have to change the definitions. Definition Q of 1303 would be probably making addition to add hookah and water pipe smoking establishments to retail tobacco stores. That's Q in the definitions. I guess that's on 922, highlighted section of committee meeting. The other thing would be, and the idea there would be to add, to include these establishments, and then add a section in there requiring the signage. Going through the code, I realized we didn't have a 130, 91307, so I thought I'd stick one in, and that would be for the signage. We could do the signage that was recommended. We could, I did not put size of the signs or anything like that. I've gone to the hookah place a couple times to see what they have. They have like a symbol 11 by 8 sign right now. They have put their warning on their menus as well. They're being very accommodating, but the signs and the sizes would be up to our choice on what we want to do with that. The other alternative, as you can see down, if you read further down, is to, if you want a ban smoking throughout the city, is to modify 91305, the exemption section, which exempts all the parts in the city that you can smoke in right now. There's A to G on that, I believe. I know the state legislature is dealing with this on some level right now. I hesitate, I have two minds here. One is that I don't like going to bars and smelling like tobacco after the fact, and most of the time I throw my clothes straight into the washing machine. On the other hand, when I used to sit down there, I would feel that this is being rammed down my throat as a public. So I would almost be willing to, I was leaning towards putting this on the ballot, but we might have one on the ballot in November. We might have something different than what we're formulating tonight or in the future. These are the things I've been thinking about for the past week and a half. Again, you talk to people, really divides up whether they're smokers or non-smokers, or libertarians and not libertarians. I mean, those are the lines I've seen for the most part, and I'm open to feedback on what do you think? Nancy?
I think that maybe, even though I understand why you're doing it, I think we ought to make a separate definition for a hookah bar.
Okay, a separate one?
Yeah, because I think that in the state ordinance, as I understand it, retail tobacco stores will be exempted, or one is a small number, and so I would think that that will create some issues.
Okay, so it's a hookah water bar, water pipe bar of some kind, and I didn't see any definitions. I kind of was running through the internet. I didn't see an exact definition I liked.
Christopher, let me guess.
No, well, no, I don't think, there's not the legal term yet I could find at this point, but it's probably out there. I'm sure it's out there someplace.
But if you read it, it says, "Retail tobacco store means a retail store used primarily for the sale of smoking materials and smoking accessories, in which the sale of other products is incidental." Does that really cover this, the hookah?
Well, no. I don't know about the new one opening. I know the present one sells food for the most part, so you want a different definition. Okay.
I think, given the fact that the Clean Air Act will probably eventually mandate a, of 90, the Cleaner Act of 90 is where it's coming from, even.
Okay, so you want a straight definition on that?
Yes.
What is?
Well, don't ask me that. I don't have any.
No, no. How's everybody else feel about that? Are there any feedback?
I think we need to change the definition, because I, when the first article I read about the opening of a hookah bar, that they were considering themselves a retail tobacco establishment, which just happens to offer you the opportunity to smoke it there also.
Okay, so we want a standalone hookah bar, water pipe, hookah, water pipe bar definition. Okay. Anybody else? Karen?
I just wanted to make a comment, because the things that you just said about, you know, the two sides of concerns within the community, I agree wholeheartedly. And I know that when we talked about this the last time, we expressed a sincere desire that more and more restaurants and bars would choose to go smoke-free, and I think that we should all go to a Hoolies after council and celebrate a new owner saying, yes, I'm going smoke-free. And the ponderosa is, well, we need to express our, or anybody in the community that enjoys a non-smoking facility, needs to support those choices by going there.
Okay, so just what you're saying is that you're leaning not to make the entire city, or not your?
Not necessarily. I think that we can continue to discuss it. I am curious and have been all along about what the state's going to do, and I've sort of been of the side of, let's wait and see what they do, and then make our choice after that, but I'm willing to discuss other alternatives as well.
Okay, and you feel the signage thing issue should go forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. One thing at a time. And a definition? Okay. Anybody else on the definition signage?
General. Signage, okay. Okay. I didn't express support for this signage idea two weeks ago, because I still have the concern, we don't require equivalent signage in other places that sell tobacco, that allow smoking of tobacco products, which we also know is harmful. So I'm not sure how we're going to be able to enforce it here and not make everybody else do it. Debbie?
Yes, my understanding of the reason for that is that cigarettes and chewing tobacco have warning labels on the packages, and people who come to the hookah bars, it's already prepared and in the bowl of the water pipe, so there's no packaging, the warning label isn't there.
So this takes the place of that?
That's my understanding of what the difference is.
And I did, as I said, I did go in there after hours, when I say after hours, they don't start lighting hookahs to 2:00 or something like that. I went there around 7:00, and I was sitting there, and somebody did wander in, one of the friends said, yeah, here, have a hit of this, and it's tobacco, it's nicotine, and it's tar-free. You know, so the myth was being perpetuated just by somebody there who's sitting there smoking it. At the same time, there is a label now, and as I say, the menu, so there's a combination that's occurring right now. Imagine if we really wanted to push it, we could actually do, require signage in all the bars. I'm not sure how, you know.
I wasn't recommending that.
Oh.
Well, I'm just saying, how do you discriminate about signage in one and not?
Are you thinking of bars? I mean, I think the difference is that in a hookah establishment, I believe, that you're going, that's your purpose for going there, to smoke hookah and maybe eat.
Eat hookah?
Yeah, but in a bar, I suppose one could say that the reason is to go in to drink, which indeed has its own, has its own health problems, and that, you know, smoking is not, you know, I want to say encouraged, or, you know, cigarettes might be sold, but it's incidental. I mean, I think that's the difference, that this is a smoking establishment. And I would certainly support going ahead with the hookah labeling, and could be interested in moving forward on a smoking ban.
Okay. Any other comments?
I also support the signage.
Okay.
Hesitant on the smoking ban, though.
Okay, right now, the wording I have would be, "Hookah and water pipes smoking causes lung cancer, heart, and other diseases and cancers. Hookah smoke contains nicotine, hookah smoking is not a safe alternative to cigarettes." This is what was put forward to us. I've been told grammatically it's incorrect, but I couldn't find it since I'm not an English major. On the other hand, the idea of size and shape, I don't know what we want to do with that. We can, I can look at the sign ordinance and see what's appropriate. I know we have signage for no smoking, although when I was looking at that, I don't think it gave us a size, it just said it had to be noticeable or something. "Signage indicating whether or not smoking shall be clearly and sufficiently conspicuously posted in every room and building." This is Part 91304C1. So there's, it's really kind of like a not exacting in that sense. But I can just say, mimic that, say it has to be appropriate of that nature. Any other statements?
Shouldn't we ask the Health Department if they have a recommendation of that?
Okay, yeah. I wanted to cover council first. Anybody else? Anybody from the audience wish to add two cents statements?
Preference on the size and location of signs?
Tanya Engleberger, Athens City County Health Department. As far as location, we had suggested, you know, in the entrances, so on the door. We hadn't talked about size, being noticeable is important, and being on the hookah menu, if they have a hookah menu, I think is very necessary. And then I just wanted to thank Deborah for her comment. That was very well, eloquently said. That's exactly how we differentiate from, you know, other signage. We think it's really important to have it, because there is no sign on, you know, when you buy a pack of cigarettes, it's on the, there is a label, a warning label on that. When you go to a hookah café, there is no warning.
Anybody else?
I'm James Argaspo, Athens City County Health Commissioner. I appreciate your attention to this hookah ordinance. I have a comment or two about the state initiative, Smoke Free Ohio, really hopes to have this on the ballot in the fall of 2006. And if indeed that happens, then you all won't have to worry about it. So I think Smoke Free Ohio's attitude would be that perhaps you should wait and see what happens with their initiative. And if indeed it doesn't happen, we'll come back to you and hope that you'll be progressive this time around. Thanks.
How do you know where that is now? Are they still getting signatures? Where do I sign?
As far as I know, they have signatures to put it to the legislation, and if it doesn't go through, then they have to give more signatures, the way I understand it, to actually put it on the ballot. I'm trying to remember where I ran across, I was running through so many websites trying to find the wording, actually. Do you know? Oh, okay. Come up and tell us about it. State your name, of course. Good that we don't have to guess now.
Well, I'm not the expert. Sharon Romina, I'm the project coordinator for the American Cancer Society Partnership at the university.
Okay.
I am technically not a Smoke Free Ohio representative. Sally Krava is, she wasn't available to come today, but based on, we presented 197,000 signatures to the state legislator on November 17th, Great American Smog Day. They had to validate a minimum of 97,000. They had to validate a minimum of ninety-seven thousand, which they did. It is currently in legislation right now to look at the ordinance itself. We're asking that they make no changes to the ordinance. As of, isn't it May, May fourth? If that goes by May fourth, we're going to be asked to gather, um, an additional ninety-seven thousand signatures different from the previous ones that we have collected to have it placed on the November ballot. And that's where we stand right now. We cannot collect signatures until May fourth. And we are in the process, once that date happens, we had a training session last week, there was a phone call about basic media coverage and things like that. And we will start doing that in, uh, May. Athens is required to, last, um, year they were required to collect, um, about four hundred and ninety-five signatures to represent like three percent of the county. We were a target county last round. I don't know, I don't believe we are a target county this time, but-
And they have to be duplicate signatures?
They cannot be duplicate signatures.
Wow.
So that's the only, that's the ones to do.
So totally separate from if you sign the last set and you can't sign again?
Right, yeah, you cannot sign this set.
Wow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So that's where we are, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, so as it stands now, I'll try putting something in some kind of form with help of Debbie Walker, probably. I'll probably pass it to the Carrie Hunter to make sure there's some kind of, uh, legalese or legal blessing on it, I guess. And we can try putting it on for next reading, if that's okay with everybody. Good? Okay, um, let me see what's next on the thing there. Um, litter permits, I don't think?
We're not ready.
We're not ready, okay.
Ms. Linus, move in.
Ms. Linus, uh, I think I had Debbie put something in your mailbox concerning, um, let's see where it was, went to.
Trash tickets.
Trash tickets, yes. Uh, I've been having conversations with Ray for a while concerning, um, litter. We had Lorraine Matassa come up and talk about recycling and part of the problem of that. We had Scott Hunter come up and tell us about litter aspects of it. He said he'd been talking to Ray and I have as well, off and on. A couple of things are on this paper, uh, essentially that you, was passed to you. One is the amount of tickets that have been generated in January and February. And you can see the, the breakdown being first offense is about thirty-five, thirty-seven tickets, second for third offense in January, just one. First offense, ten tickets, uh, in February, third, interesting enough, no seconds in there, is one. Part of the thing I'd like to actually do is for us to seriously think about adding a litter control officer. I know we're spending money for, um, Mike Cooper, um, to do some of it, uh, but that's a part-time aspect.
Could you clarify what you mean by a litter control officer?
Probably somebody who's going to go and enforce all the litter control codes.
No, no, I mean, you, you mean, you mean something more specific, I think, from what I've re-discovered before.
Somebody's going to write tickets.
That is worse. Well, you know, and, and we could go back and say that when we, when we put in the position, the temporary position, the education tickets concept was there, but we are not able to have a ticket book for Lorraine.
Oh, that aspect.
Yeah, and so, um, I guess, having talked, this is why we're both on the agenda. Ray and other people have said we could put, make it as a, an out branch of the, um, utilities billing operation. And that would put it in a slightly different realm. And so, um, I think we'd like to bring forward, and, um, I have, I've been talking about it for twenty years, I could prove it by a newspaper article. I'm glad that lots of people are now recognizing that that litter is there because I've certainly seen it for a good long time. And I'd like to have us bring forward a, a proposal that says, um, we're going to, um, let's see, Paul, how did we say we were going to fund this?
Essentially as a garbage fund.
Oh, the garbage fund, yes. And, um, raise the rates on the people who are fifty cents on the rental properties. It will be an education and, um, an, an education and regulation business for the first of July. Hire a person to do this. And it will include enforcement of which parts of the code, Paul?
Oh, sure. I looked at all this, hold on a second.
I dropped mine in the, when I covered that hole in my side box.
And then you picked it up so you didn't litter.
I picked it up so I didn't litter, but it's all, anyway.
Essentially the parts of the code would be, uh, title five oh two oh three, title five oh two eleven thirteen oh seven oh six. And I think the other one was twenty-nine twelve oh one and oh two, I think. These are sections that have to do with housing, litter and rubbish.
Storage.
And garbage.
And storage.
And store, yes. These are the things that we, we want to get done.
But we can't, we need, just we need to have somebody there all the time doing it.
Part of the funding would actually come out of the fact that we wouldn't be rehiring Mike Cooper next year. We, we spent and covered fifteen thousand last year on this. Um, I, part of the problem with coming out of, uh, it is part-time, as you can see, you know, this is a full-time job, I could see easily happening. I've been dealing, you know, we've been dealing this for a long time, I've been getting calls all the time. I, I hesitate to raise the rates up, which is what Nancy recommends, and I think we have money there, but if, we don't have a lot of money in the garbage fund to do something like this. And, and also do the other things I'd like to do, which is the other part of this message here. So that's where I am right now with that. Any response?
Well, I think that, going back, but before anybody else talks on that, I wanted to make sure you understand that. One of the things that we got feedback was that people said that we should really raise the rates more on the upper end to be an incentive. And we haven't done that, but we're talking really about a ten percent increase where we have a problem. And it's fifty cents a month, which would be six dollars a year, which isn't going to make much of a difference to anybody.
How much would that raise?
What?
How much would that raise? Yes.
We, um, about, I think we had, thought we had enough to cover. I can't do the math right now.
But actually, part of the problem is we don't really have the, the new software we're supposed to have in place. Is not really totally in place. I mean, we're, we're working through it, but if you talk to, I've attended the recycling waste district meetings and they're not using handhelds because the codes aren't put in there.
So we need Ron Forrest to do that right away.
We just volunteered, Rob, something.
He waned.
But that's, that's it, we, we charged everybody last week.
I have another question. Um, is, would this cover uptown or is just, is this just residential neighborhoods?
It's everywhere there's litter.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
Now, the discussion that Scott was talking about, and I know we has discussed as well, and part of what Scott Hunter was talking about last week was an outgrowth of, of raise, the idea of the uptown air franchise area, which is basically Congress to, uh, college and carpenter to union to mount. Would be, could get somebody be charged an extra tax, and almost like an economic development thing where they- Charge them, yeah, surcharge, have somebody pick up and clean, uh, the area.
The uptown businesses.
Uptown businesses.
That would be excellent.
They would be, they would be paying for that. I, uh, the, part of the dialogue I've had with, with Ray about this and other people is that this could be a halftime position for both these, but I think they're two different jobs, actually. One is, you know, in other words, okay, suppose your, your job is to pick up the litter on uptown. But then you step out of the uptown and then you're finding people. That's two different jobs, honestly, and two different mindsets.
One is cleaning and one is more citations.
Yes.
And education too.
Well, yes.
We have to believe in education.
Oh, I believe in education. Look how many third, we, we haven't got any fourth time tickets or fifth time tickets. We have nowhere near a hundred dollar ticket yet.
And we, yeah, we have the, my, my experience with the large pile of trash in the backyard and the first time they said, oh, go ahead and pick it up. And they got the bill and that was it. We never had another one. Word spread.
Okay, and, um, if, if you look all the way down, I think the paper I gave you, the third, second bullet from the bottom, basically, is that as response, actually, this is lifted off Ray Hasslett's, uh, email to me. Basically, the, uh, the code that we put in, and, uh, I think it was, maybe it's eighty-two oh four. The idea that we'd actually designate, the service safety director could designate anybody to do citations. I was asking for clarification of that. He says any employee, not just a citizen. I was hoping for citizens to be able to do this, but-
Neighborhood association.
Neighborhood association, vigilantes, all. But that doesn't stop them from actually reporting it. But at the same time, there's a difference between writing citations and reporting litter. And there's, there's a site on the, on the health departments for reporting litter. We could actually generate something like that for the city as well. But at the same time, um, I don't need to tell you that, uh, and this is what I'm proposing, really, this is part of-
We are proposing.
We are proposing, sorry. Nancy, Nancy takes the lion's share of this too.
Paul, if I can say something?
Go ahead.
So, um, you're talking about enforcing some of the rules such as, um, returning your garbage cans back to the back of your house on time. Or I think it's, what is it, before sundown that day? And then also, um, having proper lids on top of your garbage cans. And so we're going to be holding then the, what would be renters accountable by tacking on fines to their utility bills? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what happens now.
Okay, they don't raise, so I know, like, put out extra bags of trash and you get charged money for that.
That's not a fine.
But in, in, in fact, in the, the requirement is that the landlord is supposed to provide the garbage can.
So how then, if the landlord's supposed to provide the garbage can, I don't have adequate garbage cans provided to my home. How do, do we report that somewhere or how do we, without getting the fine or put on to our utility bill, it comes to the person at the house?
It shouldn't come to you. It should, it's a landlord responsibility. It's not then enforced.
Sure, and yet our utilities at our home are in, you know, they're in my name.
And we have two, and we have to two-year cycle on inspections and all you have to do is leave those garbage cans out one night?
Yeah, I think they've been there for maybe-
They've been run over by a truck and there they are?
Sure, yeah, and we've had those garbage cans at my house, I can imagine, for at least three or four years. They don't have lids.
But if they know, if they know that it's going to happen, maybe there's a way that we could-
Communicate that or something?
Communicate that, yes.
That's, that's a concern of mine.
I can't imagine that we, we could make, we would make the tenants responsible because it's not in-
That was only, that was my concern.
Cost to doing business is what it is.
Right, for the landlords, right.
They're making fabulous money, which, and many of them do. Because I know several of them will call me tomorrow and say, why are you saying all of us? A lot of them do provide and take care of their tenants.
Okay, so what's still-
It's a compliance violation if you don't have them.
Right, but we just don't have a mechanism for getting it done.
But in theory, you should be able to talk to your landlord, say, we need adequate garbage cans.
In theory.
In theory.
So-
We're only calling code enforcement.
Go buy one.
All right, I'm calling code enforcement.
One at a time.
One later.
Okay, go finish Amy.
No, that was just my concern, that I didn't want the burden to be placed on the tenants if they're not required to actually be having those trash cans, even though what you're saying is that the fine is going to go on the utility bill, correct?
For the litter.
For the litter.
No, for any violation.
For any violation.
Well, right now it doesn't. Right now with the, um, if, if there was a, a ticket written for not having a garbage can, would it go on the?
According to this, this is oh twenty-two oh four.
I said you want in on this rec, yeah.
Okay, oh twenty-two- We'll, we'll ask. Oh twenty-two oh four, which was done in two thousand and four, uh, basically amended the section, um, five oh two oh three. Part, and we added a D, code enforcement officers that are, that, uh, and others assigned by service safety director shall be supplied with citations that include the name, if available, address, uh, level of offense for the purposes violating litter regulations. And they quote the sections. Uh, the notice will be given by delivering such tag to the violator by fixing it to dwelling unit of the house to said violator. Citation tags shall direct violator to promptly dispose of litter and/or properly store the litter. Uh, fine shall be charged to residence utility bill. Taken citation will be documented by digital pitcher. So it will go to the utility, um-
For litter. But not the housing code. We have to come up with a mechanism for billing.
It cites twenty, twenty-nine twelve oh one in this one.
Oh, that Krava wrote too.
Right, so I'm uncomfortable placing the burden on the tenants.
Well, there's no way we should.
Right, that's, that's all I'm saying. So that's, I was under the under, I was understanding that that's what was going to be happening.
Well, how does mine is fixed? Will you just change the, yeah?
Which, okay, now you're back to-
The litter violation? The litter, I mean, if we're going to empower this person, that, you read off a series of code sections that we looked up, right?
Yes.
Some of them pertain to litter, others pertain to the housing code.
Yes, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
What you just read?
Yeah. You mean take twenty-nine out, which is the storage?
No.
No.
Have a different mechanism for charging.
Eventually it's going to go to utility billing, regardless, I mean, that's how we're going to collect, isn't it?
And it goes to the tenants.
Unless, unless we eliminate the, as Ray asked us to, but it's kind of held up somewhere, the three oh four Senate bill, but you can, we can't sub. And, um, we maybe ought to see about that and then it probably will be solved.
Right.
All right, so what we have to do, it seems to me, is have three different things. Number one, have a housing code section that's different from litter. And then have the position spelled out. As, um, and Ray is, has suggested, actually, didn't he sort of volunteer for this? You know, that he could see how we would have it work? Volunteer probably isn't the right word, but he, he saw the pain and felt it. It would be a, I'm not sure there's enough business, but maybe there is.
Oh, I think there is.
I guess I would just add that a lot of these things were discussed at a previous conversation with council. And a lot of those ideas came out of the work of the Clean Committee, which has been meeting for a while to deal with trash and, and litter issues around Athens. I don't know if it would really be that difficult to combine both of the things we've been talking about. Because I think that the uptown trash is a different situation than trash in residential areas. And I know that there has been discussion within the administration and within the Clean Committee about, you know, how to deal with the uptown area and the idea that there could be some kind of charge and it's just like another city service that's available in that for property owners in that area may be the easiest way to, to deal with uptown. And I guess I'd like to think about this person doing both of these things. I think they could probably distinguish between a specifically defined area that it's their job to actually clean up trash and then the rest of the city where we're dealing with enforcement.
I have a problem with that because, okay, if I take trash, if I'm a business owner and I don't want to clean up my own litter and I just throw it out there, I'm going to have somebody cleaning it up for me. If I do this in the neighborhood, I'm going to get a citation. So there's a mindset difference there from my point of view. It was, I'm, I'm exempt from litter control or citations at this point. I just, you know, I can throw it out there. Somebody's going to clean it up for me. I'm paying for that cleanup. I guess that's a fine in one sense, but-
The, the businesses would be required to pay this extra utility, basically?
Yes.
We tried to do it once before, maybe eight years ago, and we had union troubles with it, it seemed to me.
I, yeah.
And so it's just, it isn't something that's, I would rather try to attack the litter problem and then if we have time left over, maybe do it. I just can't see that we're going to end up with what we want if we dilute the job. And the uptown cleanup is something that when, oh, you know, I know it's the olden days, but when I was a kid, people who had the shops did it themselves.
Well, and many cities have ordinances where businesses are required to do certain things in terms of cleaning up. And some cities, it's, they, they have to wash their sidewalk by such and such a time, you know, things like that. I, I don't know if that's something that we should be looking at, where instead of having a custodian for uptown.
Yeah.
Put it on to the businesses that they are responsible to do certain things themselves.
I think that's an excellent idea. And then the businesses could decide if they wanted to get together and get power washing or, or something, and they would have to figure out a way to do it. Because I, I do think, as we've discussed so many times, that, you know, many uptown businesses really do not seem to take responsibility and it's unsavory. I mean, frankly, they'd probably get more business if they were cleaner. So I think, I think that, you know, may be an interesting solution, an ordinance about the kind of aesthetic cleanliness of the community.
Washing the vomit off the sidewalks?
Okay.
Washing the windows.
I guess I'd like to ask if the mayor wants to weigh in on this topic and also members of the Clean Committee who are here.
Well, there's a couple of things within the, I guess, the broad discussion that's happened so far this evening. One, I think, is that we need to really look at defining and what's inherently in the code as to what is the property owner or tenants' responsible area. If it's limited to their property, you're not including the sidewalks in most cases, et cetera. Some cities, uh, make it the responsibility to the street and eighteen inches beyond. Uh, and the reason there is that many times trash by passer, passerby's ends up in the gutter or on the sidewalk or just in the yard in little ways. And you need to define who's responsible for that. If you're going to say that the property owner is not, then yep, you need somebody to pick up. If you're going to say- If you're going to say that the property owner is responsible, then you go through the uptown area and everywhere else, and you write for litter tickets, et cetera, so you either look at it from one direction or the other. The other thing in the respect with the storage of cans and everything, if some of the veteran council members may recall, Code Office went through and prepared a list of a few hundred places that were not in compliance with that, and one of the things that we found was that in many instances, it's difficult or very, very inconvenient to store them behind the front porch line. For example, if you live on Madison, especially on the lower side between Spring Street and East State Street, it's a good twenty foot up in the air that you're going to have to do it versus having some enclosed area near your porch. And we went through and provided the list, and I made a note to see if Steve can find that. The other thing with, from what Amy was talking about with the cans, you have to, I think the way the code's written now, you have to put it out in a can if you're putting it out after sundown or the night before. If you're putting it out the day of your trash collection, you don't have to put it in cans, you can put it in bags. And of course, one of the things that Rayba and I've had a number of discussions about is, many times in cans, it's loose garbage, and if it's sitting out, waiting for collection, and especially if you have March winds, it could very easily get blown over, and it spills out all over, or it not all comes out of the container, most of the time the trash people don't necessarily leave them upright in the yard, and they're a lot lighter to get blown over at that point anyway, and so to a certain degree, garbage cans increase litter. Now, you got a trade-off, if you go all the paper bag, or bagged garbage, okay, you don't have the blowing around, it's all contained within the bag, it'll probably all get thrown into the trash, trash collection vehicle, you have some degree of problem of potential animals getting into trash, so it's almost like it's a trade-off. But many cities in the research that we've been doing, it comes to say, it's less of the litter on trash day, and you don't have things, cans, sitting out there all hours, being blown into the streets, cars playing dodging with them, you don't, you eliminate some of those problems that you may pick up in certain areas, some degree of problems. So there's a number of issues, I think, here that both the Clean Committee and we have been talking about, we need to, I think the education is important, but I think we have to make sure we know exactly what the rules are, so that we can push that as education, and I think a little bit of review of all those rules, and I think, Paul, you and Nancy have had this discussion with Ray to a certain extent, and either, we either try that or not, because obviously what's happening right now is not working, and I think that to a certain degree, the cans contribute to that, and there are a number of methodologies that are there to do it. Amy talked about just putting out extra bags, well, that's a higher charge than you put out stickers bags, some cities are now saying, "We're only going to pick up the bags we sell," and therefore you pay a very low base, and you, and somebody that's on vacation, instead of paying the minimum five fifty, might be paying two dollars a month for trash collection. If they're gone that month, they're gone, that's it, it's the two dollars, but if they're there and generating trash, they've had to buy the bags, we get our fees through the sale of the bags, and so it's really a pay-as-you-throw system, to a very large extent, but you do have a base level of charge just to keep capital costs and billing operations and everything else, but it, you don't even really have to punch in so much of the information there, because you're only picking up what's there, then your enforcement mechanism comes by and says, when they call probably, and say, "Why didn't you pick up my, it's in the wrong bag?" And, you know, that, that's going to take some education, but you have to be rigid on it, you can't pick up an extra charge if they use the wrong bag. You've got, you know, you've got to train people with zero tolerance in that respect to do it. So there's a number of different methodologies that we've looked at, and have some thoughts about, but I don't know that we've come to a final, this is going to solve it all, because what we're finding is, none of it's going to solve it all, it's just making a selection to which one's going to solve it best, and that's going to ultimately be council's decision.
Go ahead, Bill.
Rick, does it have to be cans or bags? We use both, you know, we use bags inside of cans, and we seem to have eliminated almost all of that, now occasionally a rack, and it'll still do a job on.
Out here out there in the country, almost.
Almost, I don't know close, but we headed them in the city.
Sure, yeah. But I mean, I guess the question, I mean, there are certain times of the year, and maybe all of us have seen the overturned trash cans, maybe you go by zone, and maybe you say, "Okay, more of the close-in neighborhood areas, you encourage bags more than anything else," because people have a tendency to leave them out, especially, you know, we all saw them, trash cans that were left out because somebody left for spring break, and they were there all week, or, you know, except in some areas where landlords came by and put them back. We all see that, see it move in, move out times all the time.
Carol first.
Aren't the bags that you buy for municipality that way, where people buy the bags, aren't they a pretty heavy, heavier than the average trash bag? The ones that I've seen in other cities are pretty substantial.
But you use a different mill than, and, you know, part of that is so that things don't break easily, it's just like if we go back and look at even our yard waste program, when we started, we went cheap, and we had pretty thin bags, and they tore pretty easy, now they're a little, little better, they don't tear as often as they used to, but, you know, you can get different, different weight, and also, you know, you regulate more to size, because right now you go to the grocery store and buy a thirteen gallon, we say thirty is on the list, but what happens if somebody buys a fifty gallon bag? You know, if you don't fill it up all the way, it doesn't make any difference, but if you do fill it up all the way, it makes a difference. So, I mean, if you're selling only one product, one color, or something on it, you control it, and everything becomes uniform, and people are paying for what they throw away.
But we just spend so much money on utilities billing upgrades, I mean, it's not done yet, I guess I'm kind of concerned about that, you know, differentiating and all the rest, making sure everybody participates in the program. I mean, I think that in my neighborhood, the bags would be fine, but I can't see storage outside, drive along Palmer, drive along Mill Street, I do it every Monday morning to see how bad it is, and they have bags, but they're not stored in containers, it's a storage problem, so would we, with these bags, eliminate the requirement that they have a garbage can for storage? I don't think so, I mean, from a public health, from a public health point of view, I don't see how we could do it.
I think you pretty well could, if you're going to combine programs, I mean, first off now, we have not had anybody for full-time inspection, or enforcement, whatever you want to call it, I mean, we have to understand that it's going to be at a loss, you know, we know that going in, I mean, it was proven very easily in parking enforcement, I mean, the twenty-four hour parking rule takes a dedicated employee, it costs forty-nine, fifty-four thousand dollars a year, and we don't collect that much on those tickets. I mean, it's a lost thing, but it's something people wanted, and so we've been doing it for about eleven years.
That's why we're proposing, yeah, that's our proposal.
You have to have a way to help pay for it, and you help do that through compliance, and through base rates and systems, but if you've got somebody going around, looking, driving in a vehicle, looking for litter each day, and you've done all plastic bags, and you see litter on there, you're going to stop the car, or they're going to have to clean it up.
We think-
Okay, I know the Clean Committee, and you have been working on these issues, as you reported, and doing a really, you know, thorough job of looking at this, and you mentioned that, you know, you'd looked at various options, when might we hear the report, you know, in the sense, recommendations from Clean Committee?
We've had some email on that at least recently, and I think everybody's kind of drafting, "What were shooting for?", I can't remember.
Say within a month.
Now, will, will the Clean Committee be making recommendations on this, like, on litter, garbage containers, I mean, is this something that you're studying, and you're going to say, "We think bags are best," or "We think cans are best"? Oh, okay, Muriel's going to speak to this.
We haven't specifically-
Muriel Grimm, twenty-four Canterbury.
We haven't specifically addressed bags versus cans, the, early on, the Cleanup Strategies Committee suggested a standardized can, and these generally do work very well, the kind with the attached lid, they are very good for keeping, they're very sturdy, good for keeping out the raccoons, at least that's been my experience where I used to live. They also, there were very well marked, the num, each house had its own particular can, now they weren't marked with addresses, they were marked with numbers, but those numbers didn't come off, now I don't know that anyone tried very hard to get them off, but, you know, I was thinking if these cans were available for rental properties with the specific address emblazoned on it as the ID numbers were on the cans that I used, that might keep your trash can where it belonged, but as of now, we haven't, well, you may still need that trash can in order to keep your bag until you put it out on trash pickup day, because where else are you going to keep it, because the animals will get into it if it's just sitting next to the house, so, anyway, this is something that we did suggest early on, and we're still looking at it, and as far as our report, we're meeting this Friday to put together the beginning, beginning of a draft, because we'll be getting the input from the various action teams.
Muriel, is it safe to say that you're going to, I always get the emails, it's safe to say that you have recommended an officer, though, right?
Oh, yes.
I mean, so we're safe in starting this through, aren't we?
That's what I was saying, yeah.
And that came to the conversation with council a few weeks ago, as well.
I just wanted to make sure that we were in sync with the Clean Committee.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be a problem, and we'll have it, so if we had someone in place by the first of July to do this work, it could evolve still further, I mean, it's not going to, one person would not solve all the problems.
Well, absolutely, and I did have an email from Jim Murray yesterday citing that, or that he could see out his window approximately a hundred dollars worth of violations, just on the twenty dollar ticket level, and so he felt that there would be no problem at all, at least in the beginning, funding the officer out of the fines, and, you know, I think the fifty cents you just suggested is probably appropriate, because I believe, Carol, that the amount you were suggesting to the water bill to fund a water person, you know, was a doll, was a dollar, and I know that would have overt, more than funded that person, so I don't think the fifty cents is out of line, but, yeah, that, Michelle maybe can address that more, she was, she was at the meeting where the enforcement group presented its recommendations on a officer to do this, but I think the fines would really help out a lot here.
Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure we were all in sync, okay, great.
Michelle, you want to add anything right now?
Michelle Drabel, North Congress Street, by the way, two weeks ago, raccoon had a happy party day, all up and down the street, it was a mess before the trash guys came, they emptied their stuff, and then, of course, there was quite a bit of residue that stayed a day or so, I don't really know who eventually cleaned it up, but, you know, there was a lot of trash blowing around. I just want to thank council and the mayor, because we've been working on this for over a year now, we've been meeting regularly, there's been enforcement groups that have met, or committees that have spread out from that. It's, when we first got into it, many of us began to realize that it's a complicated issue, there are many issues, from what kind of trash collection you use, but one of the main things that we continue to come back to is that many of us, most of us in this community, want a clean community. Clean, by the way, stands for clean litter everywhere in Athens now, if you didn't know that, clean. And we, we recognize that you drive through town, whether it be downtown Athens, and you see the overflowing trash cans, or the vomit on the sidewalk, sorry, but that's what you see, or you drive into a neighborhood and see the trash on private property, which no amount of neighborhood association or community, when we get our, the judge sends us his people, community service people, you know, none of that can clear up some of these issues on the private property, that there are many people who do not consider their properties, I don't know what it is, but it doesn't make them look clean and valuable to me, or to the residents, as Amy brings up, too, I think this is a very excellent point for students and renters, whose responsibility is it? And we don't have a united front, a lot of people like to complain, but we don't have a united front on how clean we want this town to be, and so I'm glad that council is raising this. Over the last year, we continue to come back to enforcement. Now, we all know enforcement is a big problem in terms of getting it done, you can hire all you want, but that doesn't mean you're going to be able to enforce it, but we need somebody who really believes, "This is my job, this is what I'm commissioned to do," and help clean up, whether it's going to a downtown building owner, and suggesting that something happens or a violation, their ordinance is being violated, and they're given a ticket, or it's out in a neighborhood, I think it's a citywide issue, whether you live in the city or outside the city, because we all drive at least through the city, and we see it. So we've been working hard, and the men has been there with us all along, encouraging us as well to come up with ideas and solutions, and so that's one of our biggest ones right now.
Is the suggestion of Carol's, that the uptown business owners be, in a sense, or at least there be, I guess, some kind of level of cleanliness that we kind of believe in?
A standard?
A standard, a cleanliness standard, thank you. Is that something that Clean is also talking about?
We have, and we've had some involvement, but minimal, from business owners, I know Mr. Abel has tried to talk with business owners, we actually meet at the Chamber of Commerce, they are quite concerned about this issue themselves as a group, so we wish that we had more input and more involvement, let's put it that way, involvement in terms of planning and action.
But will you be making some recommendations?
I think that definitely is a part of it, maybe Mr. Abel could add to that a little bit more, but we do have recommendations, we'd like to see some things change.
Okay.
Thanks.
Excellent, thank you.
Anybody else? Jim?
Just wanted to go back, Nancy mentioned, the mayor mentioned, it's been reiterated several times, that education is an important component of all of this activity, and don't forget our tenant notification moment that we're trying to put together, that's, that's when, Amy, you have a face-to-face or a moment in time when you and the landlord are communicating about what he or she's transferring to you, what you can expect, and that's when you say, "Here are my lids," and all that kind of stuff, and so I think that's an important, can be a very important component of this whole drive to clean the city, and I hope we can go back to that and resolve any issues that might be there.
Sorry, I just want to say one more thing, because it strikes me that, you know, we talk about education and these issues, and sometimes I think we're really talking about providing information, which is, in a sense, not necessarily education, so it's my understanding that the Clean Committee also has an education kind of component, or an Clean Group has an edu, so I'm hoping that we're looking at more than just providing information, and maybe, you know, the government channel and the website can also be- And maybe, you know, the government channel and the website can also be kind of, you know, providing not only information, but some kind of educational campaign and kind of more of a, you know, a community awareness about these issues.
Okay. Lorraine?
The gun's right in. Lorraine McCosker, consultant to City Council on recycling. I, too, wonder support what Mr. Sands said and Amy Flowers. I think the document was passed in December, and it's a very important document that's an educational tool for the landowner as well as the tenant. And there are three sections that address solid waste. One is trash can placement. The other is litter. And the third is accumulation of refuse. And I'd like to see recycling added. But this is a document where the landowner, if you recall, will educate the tenant at that point about these issues. And it also puts the responsibility on the landowner to provide that trash can with a top. If it falls apart in some capacity, it's replaced. So, I mean, I think that that's an important part of this whole component, that we have that in place for the tenants as well as the--
And just to add, as the code changes, so this notification-- Education piece will change, too. That's an excellent way to make the community aware of changes in the code.
Two years ago, the students on North Crest Street had no idea what garbage day was. They did not know when-- I mean, all they have to do is they don't know where to put it. They didn't know what, you know. So, if we get beyond that, we've made some strides.
Anything else? Carol?
How are the landlords getting those agreements?
I don't think it's been in place yet.
Well, that was exactly my point. I mean, I've gotten--
I was hoping we could put it online, see if you could download it and use it.
I know, but you'd have to know about it to do that, wouldn't you?
Well, they just all renewed their permits recently.
That's my point. I renewed a permit.
Nobody told you.
Well, but you'll lose it between now and September when you're supposed to give it to the new tenant. I mean, that's what is in the red legislation, as I recall, is we start--
So, it's geared towards September?
Getting these out geared towards September, moving, et cetera. And the only way we can look at it is we go down through the list. We can put out some public relations on it and ask them to come in and get them and keep a list and check it off. But if we don't, we'll have to mail it to them.
Right.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the end of what you said. If they don't--
We have to mail it to them.
We can put it in utilities billing. We can put it in the bill with everybody-- With it. That's why we have--
Well, the wait still exists. Still be more postage.
No, I think we get a free extra piece of paper in our building system now. I think that's why we switched over.
It only costs 20 cents or something, right?
24. For the additional ounce?
Yeah.
Yeah, 24.
I don't know.
An extra piece of paper?
No, additional ounce on your mailing. It's 24 cents.
It may not even be that much.
Okay. I know my committees have a tendency to ramble. I'm sorry.
Well, when it's multiplied times two, it rambles even more.
Okay. What I'd like to do, and it's not my-- What is it? Finance personnel, which I guess is mine. I'd like to start talking about putting an extra staffing level in to either utilities or whatever it will take--
To utilities.
To get this utilities? Okay. She's more cognizant of this than I am. To get an enforcer slash litter control officer there. To get the money, I suspect, we're talking about 50 cents extra for all the levels--
I'll put my name on it.
And I'll put her name on it, too. So, somebody else can take the buck. These are the rental unit parts. And basically, we, if you remember, in, I think it is 8204-- Oh, 8204. This was the ordinance that was passed at that time. We were increasing the rates by occupancy. And the concept there is one to three occupancies at that time is 950. Four to six is 1150. Nine to-- Seven to nine is 1250. I hope this is not-- I think it was-- May have been amended one now. And the 10 or more was 1350. So, we're really talking about just rounding up from 10-- From 950 to 10, 11 to 12, 12 to 13, and 1350 to 14, if I'm reading this correctly. Whether that will get us the monies or not, I hope it will. I think we have some money. We're a little bit on the plus side right now in the black for garbage.
Thank God.
Yes. That was last year's project.
We need enough to buy recycle bins, too.
That's why we're not going to just go out of our funds.
Yes. Which was the other part of this thing when I started. If you look down there, the--
Well, let's just say, so we'll have two ordinances up. One increasing the garbage rates and one--
And one increasing the staffing.
And creating this position. And I think that-- I personally would like to see it at least be a one-year trial. But, you know, I may be the only one. Because it may not-- You know, maybe we'll have to put it somewhere else or, you know, think about how it works.
We also may have to change the laws if we start enforcing these things full throttle and find out they're not appropriate.
The garbage--
Farther thing that the mayor was talking about was the idea of 18 inches away from the curb. That was brought up at one of the Clean Committees. I think Steve brought that up, if my memory is correct. This is an aspect we may want to change along the way. Storefrontage cleanliness, that could be an aspect, too, we want to look at. If we start getting this enforcement, we may find out that we need to modify these things.
And that would be wonderful. Suggestions that we should do.
But right now, I'd like to see enforcement.
Excellent.
I kind of think that July is ambitious because we're talking the civil service position. Which means, Jeff, we have to draft-- Unless you already have one for me--
I don't think so.
The job description and all of that.
Range two, is what we're thinking.
Right. Then we have to-- Okay, and that's-- We have to put that through the Civil Service Commission. That's not real-time concerning. Then we have to find a test. We have to advertise. We have to administer the test and interview the top 10 test takers as long as they all pass.
Okay, so--
July's a little ambitious.
Well, we'll be ambitious--
But I think somebody-- You know, I can talk to Beverly if you wish, but--
Please.
We could read them three--
We need to get an idea of how long it's going to take from her. And I can send you an email once she has an estimate on it. And, you know, from that, you'll know better if you have a little bit more time to look at some of those other aspects of-- Do it concurrently with it.
Okay.
So, we could say on or about the first of July, right?
That's what we're aiming at.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's aim at that and see if we can hit it. Okay, so, two ordinances, raise the rates, put staffing in. The other one is recycling bin toss. This was sent to me by Ray as well. If you read it, basically, the average is about 400. Two years implies 400. The reason why I put this in here is I'd like to re-prime the recycling bins. We haven't had-- We're selling them right now, and I know some people have some real tatted ones out there. I think we-- I want to see more recycling. I think I've been talking about this off and on for a year. You know, if you read the dialogue that Ray has put together there, is if we get that many, we might have-- Buy a truckload, which is $31,000 worth of 4,800 bins. We'd have some storage problems on it. I don't know about that. I think we have a full armory that's empty or something. But at the same time, I would be less ambitious and say, "Let's try for half a truckload."
I think that's--
And start putting out the word, "If somebody wants to get a new one, they can come in." Right now, as it is, if you don't have one and your address has already been given one, you buy a new one. And it's not that these are going to be coming for free because they're coming out of a garbage fund. But I think we need to make them available for people. Lorraine has found out running around, and you can see it just yourself. Most recycle bins essentially are overcapacity. They're full. Most people can use two. Most people-- If they're conscientious, they actually have two. I think if we want to increase compliance, it would be nice to get these out there again. Reshuffle it. Have maybe an online form, or they come in and just request one. We check off their name or address. Go ahead, Jim.
How did I get my first one? Was it free?
Well, when you say free--
Wait, was it--
Yes.
Provided by the garbage--
It was. Yes. And this is about 10, 15-- This was before I was paying attention, so it's got to be more than 10 years ago. I think, right? How long ago was it?
Probably 15.
15?
16.
So, they've held up pretty well for that time.
And I agree.
Amy?
Not about the recycling bin. It was about what we just talked about, about the ordinances as far as putting ordinance through on increasing the rates and then also on having an officer.
Okay.
Are we going to address the fact of who's being given the fines, though?
We've got three months.
You have three months to do that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that wasn't being-- Okay.
We could ask for help on that. So, I was asking if maybe we could put something online. And once again, I'll ask Mr. Forrest if he could make a little form.
Oh, boy. He's got lots of--
And so, anybody who wants one could go online and request. I don't know. Well, I think we could download them daily in utilities billing, I would think. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, really, the question there is, do we need to actually cover money for this? Because the money's in the fund right now.
We have--
We need to appropriate. That's-- I don't think we appropriated. Because if you're talking about a half a truckload, you're talking--
16,000.
I'm pretty sure I didn't appropriate that.
Okay. So, we need to appropriate then. I guess we just veer it onto finance personnel.
And a plate chart, so it'll be about 16, 150,000.
Well, he said he wasn't sure if we would be charged a plate chart. But I guess he has to find out. Yes, 16, 300,000.
So, around 20,000, you think, with freight?
Yes. And that should really kind of like fly out. City of Athens. Okay. Let me back to see what else we have here. Miscellaneous, I guess, is where we are right now.
Okay. I have yet to get into my New Year's activities. But I was wondering, Mayor, if you could give me some feedback on some-- On, uh-- False alarms. And false alarms. False alarms. And I've heard that the police-- You know, this is street talk. But I've heard that the police end up going quite often to university courtyard because of the panic button. And I wonder-- Oh, your credit union takes the prize, I realize.
Well, they're both of them pretty high.
Yeah. So, I don't know if that's--
Your credit union--
Yes. And they take--
You have a bad alarm system. You have a bad alarm system. You don't fix it, it keeps going off.
And is it going to be charged for false alarms? I don't know.
Well, there are automatic rings to either directly to the police department or you go to a service who's located somewhere. And nine times out of 10, they just then call it in. I mean, if you look-- Remember, the fire department-- You don't report that necessarily in the police department report. But if you look at the fire department--
Activity reports?
Their annual report or even the weekly ones you get, I would say at least 50 to 60% of all runs are alarm-based and there's no fire. Now, whether somebody pulled it or it was a malfunctioning alarm, that's sometimes hard to tell. But usually, you find out the malfunction was pretty quick.
How does that compare with other communities, I'm curious? Is it that high everywhere?
Well, I'll give you an example. I read in the Dispatch this past summer, I think, that Columbus Institute defined for them. They were having a little difficulty collecting them. I think one private individual that had one on their home was up to 27,000 dollars in fines. And one business, I think, was over six figures.
So, it must be--
It was one pound. I mean, so, it's-- One of the biggest growing things that's happened in the last 15 years is home alarm systems and alarm systems for commercial businesses. Almost everybody has them. They're-- You probably get discount on your insurance. I don't know. And there's a lot of services out there doing that. And that was one of the charges, as you remember, in the MAXimus report we were to reduce because we were doing a flat $50 per year and only looking at the code enforcement time of it. If we were also looking at--
Police.
Police and fire time of it, we might have come up-- MAXimus might have come up with a different dollar amount there. There is some stuff in the code that allows after so many-- That the police-- I think it's more geared toward the fire-- Can make a billing for it. But I think it's at a rate that-- I think when we last reported to council three or four years ago about this, it costs us a lot more than what the fine was to roll an engine. Because when you start-- You know, it's hard to really look at the cost. But you're just in the process of approving a new fire truck at 400,000. And most of the feedback I'm getting is going to be lucky to get it at 400,000.
It's just-- When you read the report from the fire department, it does-- I think the chief always suggests--
Good attempt.
We should really work hard around getting those, you know--
I did get an email from Chief Mayor because Debbie had sent one out this afternoon or maybe this morning on when he replied and they gave those to us as his hire. He needs-- There's more-- A little more in-depth analysis by both chiefs to do, but--
Maybe next month. Okay. My last thing is, what can we do to get another police officer or two, do you think? Any ideas? Just because it's 8:30 and everybody--
Place taxes?
Well, okay. I mean, I think there's a way around it. There's probably some other ways, too.
Well, I mean, as I look at the general fund and you look at the different priorities or staffing levels that you have, I mean, we're at the stage, I think, right now that everything that's budgeted within is accounted for. And then, we're holding one slot that's not fully budgeted, but the person's in the military. And you're always going to have that problem. I was-- Would recommend, and what we've looked at, is what is the cost savings that we're projecting? Because we didn't hire January 1. We only have hired one this year, but the second one is in process. And if he passes everything, we'll hope to have him on board in April. And of course, Officer Dickens is just coming back tomorrow from injury leave of seven or eight months.
Or Halloween, right?
So, there is-- In both of those, a little bit. And by the time we would do it, I think we're almost analogy into the same position we were with the fire department 11 years ago, where we knew eight people were going to retire. And so, we bumped it up a little bit. And that's what we eventually took back. And now, you know--
They're still the same level they were 11 years ago. But the town has grown some. But I think we have enough potential in a history of retirement, whether they be disability or full retirements in the police. And I think that we're okay to carry and go up to the full staffing level
to get past that, which I think was what your real question was.
Cop-- Just cops fast, just to that level, would be good.
Need money.
Yeah. Well, what about Officer Alexa, just before-- I'm sorry, Debbie. But he used to be on separate line. Now, he's in the regular. So, aren't we actually down two? Because if I go back to the pre-Bush era-- I mean, pardon me for being political, but, you know, the pre-Bush era, we had--
Well, Officer Alexa was there at the time--
As a separate line.
Domestic violence grants. He was assigned to that.
Okay.
And in the early years, when they were paying us $100,000 a year, I could get some of his-- And in the early years, when they were paying us a hundred thousand dollars a year, I could get some of his, most of his money from it. Now that they're down a little, around fifty thousand, I'm basically covering the social workers' cost.
Out of the grant.
Out of the grant, and that's it.
I looked at two thousand and I was trying to, because it seemed like we were down two instead of one. But in fact, it's because we don't have the grant funding that officer.
Right, it was, we had, I think, five at one time, four in cops fast and one in the domestic violence area. We're zero with all of that now, and most of those have attrited. But I think, if you count the nineteen patrol officers, six lieutenants for twenty-five, and then a captain and chief were twenty-seven, that's only two left than our all-time high. And that was when we had five grant funded.
Yeah, so it was the grant-funded one, and I, that was the one, I thought Alexa was still, the grant funding is, is only going to the social work.
Right.
But of the nineteen, one doesn't, one isn't budgeted?
Right, one's not budgeted, one's only partially because of military leave.
But that one will come back, that person, probably. Yeah.
I don't know, because he voluntarily took a couple of year assignment with the military. I think he's a captain or a major in the military.
Probably.
But you just, you have to, by federal law, leave the position and have to fund it when they come out. So I leave it in there as a budgeted or as an authorized position. They do have their right to come back for, I think, twenty-two days or something like that, each fiscal year, and get the benefits or actually have to pay.
But the one that isn't budgeted now is a whole position, that if we could find the money for that, we could start looking.
Yeah, and I'm not thinking that, you know, there's pools one year, the next that you can. I mean, the big, the risk that we have is, we have looked at the general fund, and if you look overall at the income tax, it was good last year, it went up four point some percent. The year before that, it went down over one percent. First two months of this year, as the auditors reported to, it's down. We know the university is in an early retirement incentive and is saying, talking anywhere from, depending upon who I talked to, one hundred to one hundred and fifty jobs. How much is that going to do? McBee's in the final stages of closing its doors here in town. At the same time, you know, anybody's guess. I mean, we know we're all working on it, but all we have to do, have to gather from that is phone calls of estimates. But it's really looking at what's the dollars coming in the door each month as we analyze and compare those with previous years. By month, it's the same month. And we're running, first two months of the year, we're running less than last year, but higher than two thousand and four. Not by much, but higher.
I wondered about two possible places. I wondered about tourism, which seems to have a pretty significant unencumbered balance. And we know that there's another hotel being built. And I wondered, we changed the mix at the end of the year last year, and we took a percent from general to rec. And I wondered about taking half of that into general.
Where do you want to lay off? If you aren't raising them more money, tell me where you want to lay off. Because that's eventually what's going to happen. It may not happen in one year, but it will happen. That's my considered opinion after working with that budget for as long as I have, is that I think that if we increase revenue sources, we did it in the planning area. From the standpoint, we've changed maximum fees, and it was to be an amount enough to be able to hire a new planner for the first time. Right now, tonight, you're talking about litter control, you're talking about raising rates in order to pay for it. You know, we've switched, we're getting a little bit more income in, in parking enforcement right now because of the change in systems. When we look at the full year of two thousand and four, our collection ratio is, I think, sixty, sixty-two percent, somewhere right through there. The report I got for two thousand and five, and we only started on the system in July or in August, it was seventy-three percent, okay?
I've heard this.
Saw a nice change there monetary-wise. And we're, we've got back ones that we're going to be hopefully collecting. But that's a, that's a capital cost, you know, coming in, because when you're collecting back accounts receivable, it doesn't go on forever. If you, if your collection ratios start evening out. But, you know, it's been my hope that we can get enough out of the change in that to be able to add or fully fund the nineteen that we have on our books right now. But if you're going beyond that, well, I'll look again, but I just, to do it indefinitely, because that's really what you want. You know, this isn't any short-term fix where we need an extra officer for two or three years. We need them forever, so you have to have forever funding.
I guess what, when I, when I looked at it, I saw there was maybe some carryover that we hadn't anticipated. So, you know, maybe the half percent wouldn't be such an onerous burden for recreation, but all of a sudden appeared in the budget comparing, and it's not, you don't call it carryover in your budget. It's what they call it in university budgeting, you know, the.
I care, I'll call it carryover.
Carryover, okay, same thing. And then the other thing is, you know, as I look at this, if we start applying or maybe even get a managerial consultant, then maybe we could save some money as well in this area, in the recreation area, in the areas that have not been yet fulfilled. I mean, have not been pursued or whatever, implemented, better word. No, so I would, a half a percent with maybe some, as Debbie said.
A half, a full percent gives you seventy-four thousand dollars roughly a year. So half of that is roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars.
And then the slop on the recreation.
And a police officer with health insurance, twenty-one or twenty-two percent retirement benefit that goes into the state fund. I mean, if you look at that line item across in there, I think it's between seventy and eighty thousand, huh?
And tourism is the other place. I mean, because that is, that is money that we can use for our central core mission, which is public health and safety. I mean, beyond anything else, that's the.
Oh, I, I know that, I'm just saying that you then have to cut out some of the other things you've been using small amounts of that fund for. There's a decent balance there, it can easily fund you for a year, maybe a year and a half on that. But you give thirty-five percent of it to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, fifty-five thousand, which is probably thirty-some percent under today's collections. Because I think collections last year were a little under, we're under two hundred thousand, I know. So you're already probably spending sixty-five percent of that amount. So probably thirty to thirty-five percent, fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars a year is probably, if you devoted everything that you don't have under contract with the chamber or with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that's on an annual basis. Now you eat up the balance you've got already there.
We need portafodies and things like that, so that's why we go with the recreation, you know, potentially at least the recreation.
Well, we charge them for our amount when they come in for Halloween. We charge six, seven thousand dollars right now on tourism for Halloween costs.
Okay, and they're appropriated, right? Okay, so that's nice. I was hoping you'd look at it, I think, I guess, you know, I feel, I feel a lot of pressure. I mean, some of my neighbors who've talked to you have talked to me, and they help me down. And they say, you know, we need this, don't do this.
Well, I think that's what we've done, Nancy. I think that over the years, I mean, you and I were, were the only ones left that I think had to lay off. I don't think he was there. I know he wasn't laying off.
I know, it was terrible, it was terrible.
That, that is one, been my, one of my goals. I don't want to have to get to the point of laying people off.
I agree.
And maybe I'm then too conservative financially to, to do that. But I've been down that road once, and I didn't like it.
No, I remember, it was hideous.
I think it was eighty-four, the last time we had property, or it's income tax increase.
But if we only have half a year, you know, because you'd be going toward the hiring and then, you know, knowing that we would.
Well, but looking at it from the income tax standpoint, I mean, we put, let's say we put seventy-five percent, because it's roughly, or somewhere right around there, maybe it's seventy-four this year, I have to look. We collect eight point five million dollars there, we already have a couple designated things that go out to, to pay some debt and, and street rehab. Our general fund budget's ten, ten point two million. Almost half of that general fund budget or a little bit more, we're getting from other sources. And a lot of those, I mean, you remember when we raised the per-year landlord or rental fee from fifteen dollars to, what did we go to, forty-five that first year?
I think it was forty-five, yeah.
Per year.
Not like fifty.
It was thirty.
Thirty, we went through that.
It was fifteen every two years and then thirty a year.
Well, but I mean, we're getting to the point that the code enforcement has a drain on our general fund of almost a half a million dollars. It's getting to the point that they're eighty percent sufficient because of the fees we're charging, all legitimate chargebacks. But there is some general government in there that has to be taxed.
Yeah, we're.
So we have tried, and, you know, council's been very, very supportive over the years of this, that trying to look at other areas, that we can charge fees legitimately and, you know, avoid having to do a tax increase. You can remember the Fitzgerald Report when we studied the fire department that said, oh, we need more than the minimum staffing. We keep on duty at four people. I had tried six when we were in some good budget years, but we got an overtime budget of almost two hundred thousand dollars in the fire department. Last year, I think it was about eighty-five, because we're now staffing a minimum of four. And there was a reason for that. Now, most of the time, there's five or six on duty, but every so often, you get down to the four. And I don't really think, you know, if we're talking safety, we need to talk about both. I mean, I know that more people are going to want to talk about the police department, but I also like to at least talk about the fire department. Because to have twenty-five firefighters, I've been with the city, see fourteen years on council, this is my eleventh year as mayor. We've had twenty-five firefighter, or actually a little bit more than that, because we had a fire inspector at one time.
I remember that. That was next month, though, the fire.
Yeah, well.
I mean, it's long.
But if, if we're really going to look at it and address it this year, we need to discuss it now, because if you're going to, if you decide not to do it through the tax increase, fine. But we have to have some degree of plan of how we're going to reestablish priorities to do anything. If you're going to look at it from the standpoint of, put the position to the, to the voters, because a tenth of a percent of income tax, which we just took off, what, three years ago?
That was.
Because they had voted it in, and we had a two or three-year period where everybody was paying.
Was that three hundred thousand?
But we're one point six five percent right, no, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Per one percent.
Per one percent.
Point one percent, okay.
Yes, point one, tenth of a percent is five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
I, I've not really heard about income tax, but I guess if I were God, I would consider putting the whole straws run up as a separate tax item and get management from the beginning and stop trying to piece it together with a whole bunch of gaps. That, you know, that would be my core mission.
That's April tenth, we got that.
Well, I don't know, but I'm just saying that I think that, you know, there are some things that are more core.
I know.
And that is certainly, that's on the periphery.
Well, and I think it is a core item, and I, you know, I think that we've given some reports over the years. And when we did do the cutbacks, I know that, especially in the, in the, in the police department, you know, council was very reluctant to do that. But none of us could find the money anywhere. And that was when the grant position started going off, and we had attrition, and we took advantage of that attrition. Because we had to by, to terms of the grant, employ past the grant period by at least one year. And we met all those requirements and exceeded them. But when we started getting some retirements and disability or people moved to other, other positions, we started to cut back some of that. But I think I would also would remind that we last did the non-union pay person. And when we took care of that last year, we only went through pay range five, I believe. And, and it was a monetary issue to us then. But we do have the, the position now that people that are in supervisory positions of chiefs or captains in both police and fire and some of the other areas, the people that report to them are making with overtime more than they are in some cases. But there's not a fifteen percent even differential between a lieutenant. Lieutenant has a twenty percent differential over patrol officer. There isn't any five, ten, or fifteen when you go up to it. Because when we hired the last police captain, his average with overtime was more than he can make as captain, and we had to hire him at the top of the pay grade. Which means until that pay grade changes, that person will never get a pay raise.
But they have longevity over.
They had longevity before, too, as a lieutenant, they were just getting more money.
But the whole system was designed with longevity in mind, and, you know, we always talk like it's.
I just caution that last year, I talked to you about this, that we need to take a look at those pay range six and above. And again, we, you know, we'll do a study, we'll take a look at other things, but we have to also look at the reality that I have, we have as a city, some topped-out department heads that have not gotten a raise in three or four years. That's just reality.
I thought you had three percent to distribute.
No, not when they're topped out.
Not when they're topped out. No, they have longevity. I mean, that's the way the system was designed, wasn't it?
Right, and all of them do have longevity.
And it's six percent.
But what happens, because it's a fixed longevity, to them, they haven't gotten a pay raise.
Can I interrupt for a second? It sounds like we veered into finance personnel.
No, but this is, this is, this is.
Services. Okay, services.
Miscellaneous.
I, I like.
I was interested in how to do it as in finance personnel.
But I would, I would really like.
But I can't.
I can't, I can't get you to move on the police officer quite yet, but I do think that there's a lot of sentiment out there, and they generally are focused on the planner rather than some other places. But I would like to see some way to implement this to sharpen up recreation management so that we have a little more money. I mean, I, I think it's there, because I look at this and I read what they said, and some of those areas are not making what they should.
Right.
And, and I think that with the community police dialogues that happened a few weeks ago, it's really clear that there's a lot of concern in the community, in the community about the increasing violent incidents that are happening uptown and the fact that attention to those is really taking attention of the officers away from neighborhoods. I, it's something that I've heard people continue to talk about, and I think we have to deal with it.
Right, and that's why I brought it up with the police chief at my side a couple of press conferences ago and have for a couple of years now. I mean, I'm not, I'm trying to be honest with the public, too. I mean, or I am, because as I see problems or problems are brought to me by the department heads, I, I report. You know, it's not that, I'm glad the public's paying attention, because what's happening is only going to be happening with their support.
Realize from the West Side people, I'm hearing the annexation of University Estates, which means eight hundred acres more to patrol and fire protection. And they're saying, you know, does this mean less for us or what does it mean? And that's what they're asking, they say, what does this mean? You know, besides, you know, railhead protection, all the other stuff, but, you know, these are the.
Well, hopefully, what it means is about twelve hundred new places to live in some commercial spaces. And that you then increase your population, yes, but at least, you know, most of these have been built at the state of the art, which have a lot more fire prevention stuff in. Are we going to have calls, are we going to, yep, there's no question about it, we're going to have some increase. I mean, most residential improvements, if you want to call it, or annexations are in essence a wash or a cost to the city.
Yeah.
Because you usually don't get, because especially in our situation, most of the people work in Athens already.
Yeah.
Are already getting the taxes.
And we just have to pay out the police and fire.
Right, but what, what, you know, it's the commercial aspect of it that if a nursing home is built over there and some continuing care and an office building and some, you know, some things, yeah, we hopefully will get some more income tax from that, and that's a, that's positive, but it's going to add, you know, to our service area.
Is there a plan for the MAXimus thing? I know we did all the ordinances last year for the code. Are there, is there a set of recreation changes, fee changes that are coming down the pike, or? I don't know anything.
Well, we raised from that because council given the authority to us to be able to do that. We raised the annual membership fees across the board. We've raised some program fees for, you know, some of the programs we, we've looked at. But at the same time, because of, you saw in the report, maybe a week or so to you, where we had come to an agreement with jobs and family services that if a child was registering one of our soccer programs or baseball, et cetera, we would waive the registration fee, not knowing what it cost. Well, so far, as you saw in last week's report, there was thirty or so children that are now going to be able to play those sports. But that means thirty times twenty bucks or whatever, we're not going to get, but that's what, six hundred dollars. But it does impact into recreation, because I felt that there was a strong feeling that, you know, recreation should not only be for those that have the ability to pay. And I still believe that way.
Oh, no problem.
And I think everybody on council does, too, but.
I think there was a recommendation in there around industry standards in terms of cost recovery related to youth and seniors at a lower level and for adult programs at a higher level also.
Right, right. And, and, and we're reviewing those, but, and, and we've been upping some fees. But probably now I have to get an extra forty thousand unless membership continues a little, little stronger. But you always see the sort of the lull there as people, oops, I forgot to renew. That happens. And they've been used to a lower price, but we held that price for five years, which is pretty good.
Are they miscellaneous?
Okay.
Finance?
Finance and personnel, we have miscellaneous listed. I really don't have anything to insert there. Between city services and finance and personnel, we'll work out these three proposed ordinances that we just talked about. Last week, Auditor Beck mentioned a proposal that's been floating around for registration of service industries that work in the city. And she's been talking to the income tax administrator and Steve Pearson in the code office. And is putting together a recommendation. And is putting together recommendations, which she hoped she'd have tonight, but she didn't. So we'll get those in your box probably sometime later this week, so that you can kind of look at them before our next meeting.
And then we'll discuss it before we have...
Oh, absolutely. Then we'll have a big discussion, probably over a course of several committee meetings, because they're different aspects to look at. The other miscellaneous is that next week at seven o'clock, I assume, we're going to have a, our second public hearing on the CDB, under...
CHIP grant.
CHIP plans, the CDG funding. And we will also have our auditor's tutorial beginning at six-thirty in council chambers. We'll be discussing the first quarter reports, financial reports, which will be there. And I do believe the January and February are in the council office now. So we'll be moving to approve those reports, and then we'll be discussing the quarterly report.
Will we have the spreadsheets for the quarter, the reports? Do we have them now? We don't have them now.
The quarterly reports, no. They'll be there sometime this week.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Transportation committee, we seem to have lost our chair. But miscellaneous and I have three items. The legal office has one as well. The first one is either in your mailbox or you brought it in with you. You have yet another draft of the taxi ordinance, because when I got home from the conference and checked my emails, there were a few little things flying around about, well, what happened to such and such. It was the wrong draft that was brought forward. So we will have to amend next Monday.
The insurance part, I think it was?
Yes, and I can, I can tell you what they are. As a matter of fact, I highlighted them, but you can't really see the highlight. Page five, at the top, excluding limousine services crossed out with the sentiment that if a limousine is being operated as a cab, it needs to be identified as a cab. Bottom of the page is one of the insurance things. It should be a hundred thousand dollars instead of a hundred and fifty thousand, and the other one's on the top of the next page. Because the information from the insurance companies was that indeed it had to be those increments. Then on page eight, there's a sentence added at the end of C. It says applicants must also have a good driving record. And page eleven, under sixteen, it says no taxi cab operator shall knowingly or recklessly, has been added.
Okay, so these additions on this room.
Right. And shall was changed back to may. Those were from the legal office. And that's it. So it's fairly minor things, but yes, but...
Okay, I hate to ask the question at this late date, but no taxi cab operator driver shall knowingly or recklessly use a taxi cab to pick up or deliver drugs. So that means, in other words, if they didn't know it...
If their fare had drugs in their pocket and they were pulled over, then the cab driver would not be a knowing participant and would not lose his license.
What does recklessly mean? They could do it carefully? I mean...
It's illegal.
It's a legal term. It came from the law. They asked that I add that.
It's illegal, okay.
Any other questions on that? So we'll just amend by substitution on Monday, and then we'll go back to first reading. So I didn't miss anything. The second thing, it just was that I wanted to comment that the hang tags were discussed at the conversation with council, and so they will continue to be discussed. And I also just wanted to comment on the fact that the conference that I attended was a national conference on transportation in university towns. It was a really outstanding conference. It was four days long, sessions from seven AM till nine PM, all four days. And so there's a great deal of information there. Sherry Barnes from Ohio University attended with me, and we came home feeling very strongly that we've got just the model situation to move forward on this, and that most towns that were university towns that did a joint transit service found that their transit increased, I think the minimum one that we saw was four times within a couple of years, and some of them as much as ten times over in terms of ridership, that people truly did embrace the idea and that it moved forward. Paul?
Do you have any idea how long it would take to implement something like this?
Um, what we need to do, there are several things. We, we've got to discuss the management of the system. Our contract with Layla will go out for, request for proposals will go out this summer. So the timing is right for that, and so we'll look at that aspect of it. On May fourth, the consultant that we've been working with is presenting his final recommendations in terms of routes and frequencies, the first step. So, and it isn't a dramatic change, but it's more like our main routes go out and come back the same way instead of the loops. That we'll cut out some of the duplication in the center of the city.
If I remember, we have to have public hearings for every route change?
You do have to have a public hearing for changes in transit, but that's not difficult to do. So that is May fourth at nine-thirty in the morning in this room. And we will be inviting stakeholders, people that will be affected. And the taxi cab companies are being invited to have representation here, because it will impact them. And what I've been telling them is that there, there may be some level of it that might feel initially threatening, but we're hoping to find other ways that they can take part in the total picture and that it will be hopefully a win-win for everyone. So I, I felt that it was a huge step forward just in terms of being able to see where we were in the process. We knew that it, it felt like a very long time and not a huge step forward. But we really discovered, when we went through sort of a mental checklist of how this process goes, that we were very well into it and we've got some, we could see where to go now. So that was, that was an excellent thing. So I hope that some folks will come to that May fourth presentation. And actually, Bujinko and I discussed the possibility of having a conversation with council on the topic as well. So, Paul?
Miscellaneous?
Yep.
Last miscellaneous, I just passed you the documents I sent out, nine point five oh five. This is for assessing Jeff Hill again. The agreement between, I think, the sorority and the university was never finalized in the last council. The road, as far as most people would think, still needs to be repaired or done something with. We have the power to assess the adjacent property owners. This is the packet to start of moving if you choose, or at least look at it. I wouldn't think of doing it this year, because all the things are required to do it, and it would give everybody who is a stakeholder have time to move their budget around, since they had the money to do it last year. We've had two cases where we would use, could use another street, when Oasis was shut down by a pipeline, and when, I think, President Street, Bentley Hall was shut down last week sometime. There was obviously traffic flow problems. And just last night, somebody, people spoke, and they want to use it as a road. So these are the aspects I want to look at. This is the packet. I cite the parts of the High Revised Code that requires us, enables us to, enables us to actually assess property owners. I think everybody would say it'd be nice to get it fixed. I think we still do need the road to get in and out of the city as a road. And that's why I'm just bringing it up, so it can perk. We need three, a super majority on council to pass a resolution to, and we will assess. We'll probably have to generate an assessment board along the way and devise a methodology, which is cited in the High Revised Code, on how to assess whether by frontage, use, I think there's three different criteria you can use. I forget which one it is offhand. That's why I'm just giving you the material so you can review it. Any questions? Debbie?
I guess just a comment. I mean, I believe that the university feels that they've resolved the issues around Jeff Hill. But because of the conflict of interest issue that came up in December, there had been some discussion that individual members of council and perhaps the law director would be getting in touch with the Ethics Commission to try to get a more in-depth review of some of these issues. I had requested that we not deal with the, you know, anything that may trigger that until we got some more response from the Ethics Commission. So the fact that it hasn't come back may just be that. They may have resolved that issue.
Maybe we should wait for the law director to tell us, right?
Well, we should just check into, when you say that they haven't worked things out with the sorority, then I think they may have. But I wasn't really wanting to move anything forward until we had some clarification about the conflict of interest issues that came up this year.
The way I was hearing it from law director last year is that they don't look at cases unless they come in front and come to the fore. As far as I know, there's nothing coming to the fore right now, except something like this that we would bring up. I have no problem holding off. I'm just bringing it up because it has been languishing for a while. And I, and I don't think the road's been improving on itself.
I mean, this would be a different issue. If we want to just fix our road ourselves, there isn't any conflict of interest, so.
Yes, we don't have the money. And the...
That's a different problem.
Wait a second. And, and the argument for vacating it last year was that it doesn't benefit anybody except the property owners adjacent to it, and therefore, they wanted it because they liked it so much. And is it being proven for them? They wanted to improve it. We're just trying to help along. Anything else? That's it for me. Communication?
Communication committee. Something I want to be first on the agenda.
You are first. It starts at six.
Okay. Just a report on the conversation with council tonight. It was a small but committed group on parking and the hang tag situation. And if I may say, you know, one of the kind of things that came out was there doesn't seem to be enough street space, given the number of cars in this community. But that is not news to anybody, probably. Solutions are hard to come by, but at least we got some issues on the table. And Amy Flowers will be writing up the comments from the meeting and posting it on the website. And the comments from the previous one on safety, I have been slow in getting those up on the website, but they will be up. And two weeks from now, Carol, if you want to discuss in general broad issues around transportation, would that be bus system and routes and things like that?
Yes, I'd love to start hearing people's comments about what they'd like to see in this great plan.
Okay, so people interested in transportation issues? And I suppose that could include...
Bicycles.
Everybody. Bicycles. I was just going to say bicycles. Not pedestrians, buses, et cetera. The next one will be two weeks from tonight, six o'clock, in the mayor's conference room on the first floor. That's it for me. Oh, yes.
Do we, do we send an announcement or invitation to student senate, inviting them to participate? These discussions do involve student life in Athens also.
Actually, we do not send invitations. And right now, we have just been sending in a news release, and I know the messenger has been printing the announcement of the meeting.
I read it, there it is.
Yeah. However, we have not been issuing special invitations. And that maybe something we want to talk about is how to invite people other than just generally through the media. And maybe we can kind of, oh, kind of quickly, you know, if people have ideas, let me know, yes.
Actually, what I did on the first one was I contacted groups that I thought would be interested. And so if the person who chairs the committee comes under were to do that, that would be one way to, just to be sure that groups that are stakeholders know it's happening.
Yes. And I personally feel that there might be individuals who are not group members that could be interested in coming, so we don't want to, you know, kind of limit it just to groups, but those are the people. You know, I'd love to have student senate and others.
And yet, I guess my concern is the last two meetings, city council members have outnumbered citizens. And I think that is probably intimidating to many citizens, that it's similar to what we have here, except we're all sitting at one level.
Right.
So I just, I'd like to have more opinions.
Yes, and actually, one of the topics, until Carol brought up this topic on transportation, was going to be, you know, maybe how to generate more interest in this and how to get some more participation. But we kind of jumped in with a lot of topics. And so I would invite people on council or other people who are listening to this program. You know, if you know people who are interested in the transportation issue, you know, please let them know that next, in two weeks from tonight, I don't have the date right off the bat. Do you? April something will be...
April tenth?
Okay, April tenth will be a conversation. And so I think that is the next step, to kind of make sure that we promote that and invite people who we think are interested in that topic. Did you want to say something, Paul?
No. I assume everybody who is on email list for the agenda would also get, they get the agenda, so it's on the agenda. That's...
It's on the agenda, but it's noted as a dialogue. Yet does student senate get this?
No.
No.
Maybe we should put them on the list.
Well, can we say that people who think of groups that, that should be invited, can we give that to you, Debbie, and you can kind of add them to the list? Or is that harder? And then they get everything?
Yeah. I know there's an Athens Transportation List Service. I'll put it out on that if I come on it.
Oh, super, okay. Okay, any other ideas for participation? Actually, I think more participation, not only from students at the university, but, you know, employees, whether they represent the university or simply work there. And I know that in the past, you know, we've kind of invited even city staff people to attend. And if they could think of it as kind of, you know, not representing the city, but just basically attending and providing the information that they have and being in conversation, it would be really useful. Okay, that's it for communication for a moment.